... in the Quaid Room, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. It is seven o'clock. I welcome everyone here tonight. We're being broadcast live on local Channel Eight and streamlined live on the Town of Mashpee website at www.mashpema.gov backslash channel dash eight asterisk. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll approve the minutes of the meeting. Has everyone reviewed the April seventeenth, 2024 minutes?
I move approval as written.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't second it. I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Yes. Well, I'm voting yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
And Dale, you seconded it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I missed that.
And the other one is the meeting from the Joint Select Board and Planning Board of December eighteenth, 2023. All those in favor? Or does anybody have any changes or edits?
You had none. Were you in there?
Pardon me?
Were you?
I'm not mentioned in there, but it doesn't matter. It doesn't change anything. I was there.
You were there and you spoke?
I did.
During that meeting, Karen spoke. I think we should... That didn't get captured on the video?
I did not capture it in the notes.
I think you had...
I did speak. I did. I spoke briefly. I remember I said something like I was disappointed that the housing production plan included median-priced houses. I thought it was just gonna be affordable houses.
I think that comment was important, and I think it should be put into the minutes. Because it didn't happen.
I don't... I mean, I don't think it...
You said it.
I did say it.
Who?
Chrissy, you could just scan it through. It was kind of at the beginning, because I was chairing that meeting. Yeah, I made a statement, and I didn't speak very much thereafter. Okay.
Do you want to wait to amend, to look at it as amended, or...?
Let's pass it tonight with the condition that you do an amendment to it, to effect that. All those in favor?
I make that motion to...
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Anybody want to discuss it?
No, I also abstain.
Oh, you're abstaining?
I wasn't there.
You were not there. Okay.
Rob, were you there?
Yes.
Do you want to second it?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. So they're approved as amended. Thank you.
Next, we have approval not required, A and R. The applicant is John Trantalo, 153 Captain's Row, Mashpee, Mass. Assessors map ninety-six dash forty-two dash zero, ninety-six dash forty-three zero, ninety-six dash forty-four zero. The purpose of this request is to divide an undeveloped lot into two new lots of equal land area and to be conveyed to the adjacent properties addressed at one fifty... as 159 and 149 Captain's Row. Okay, we have here Form A, the application for endorsement. John Trantalo is the applicant, and he lives in Connecticut. The owner is a different person, Edward Lott, whose address is 59 Captain's Row. And Mr. Trantalo is looking to A and R, 153 Captain's Row, which is undeveloped land, and divide it between himself and Edward Lott. Four men, notice of application filing with the Mashpee Planning Board. Quick claim deed from Mark and Robin Galant, husband and wife, to Edward Lott and Amy Fish, his wife, as tenants by the entirety, and John Trantalo, and John Trantalo, his wife as tenants by the entirety, 149 Captain Row, Mashpee. The town website... What do you call this, Evan, exactly? I mean, I know what it is.
It's the property card, Assessor's Property Card.
Property card, yes. And Mr. Trantalo giving permission to Colley Site Service to represent him in this matter. Are you Colley Site Service?
Yes, I'm willing.
Okay. And both Edward Lott and Amy Fish give permission for you to do so. And there's just one check here for a hundred dollars. Isn't there usually a bigger check?
Hundred dollars for an A and R.
Just the A... Okay, good. All right. So here's the... I find this very confusing. So maybe you can help us...
Sure.
What is your name, please?
William Colley.
William Colley, okay.
Yes. Presently, Mr. Lott owns Lot 143. Mr. Trantalo owns Lot 145. Galanti owned Lot 144, which is between them. All three lots are ten thousand four hundred square feet. Mr. Trantalo and Mr. Lott are buying the property between them and splitting it evenly, so it will now be two lots of fifteen thousand six hundred square feet.
All right, so that's... Then they'll be equal-sized lots.
Equal-sized lots, yes.
All right. And I'm looking at the plan. The abutters are all listed as... Presumably, they're all current abutters. Who verifies that, by the way? That this is... Well, actually, you drew the plan, right?
Yes.
So these are all current abutters?
Yes.
Yeah. And this is on Captain's Row, which is a private way.
Right.
So they're on a street there. And there's the seal of the land surveyor. And the setback from Captain's Row is forty feet with side setbacks of fifteen. So are they in the R three or R five?
R three.
R three? Okay. Mr. Town Planner, is this all in order from your viewpoint?
It is. These are pre-existing non-conforming lots, all lots currently in existence on the ground today. There's no change in frontage other than the additional frontage being conveyed to the adjacent lots, so now their frontage on Captain's Row increases. There's no alteration to land area other than is... would be gained by the division of the lot separating the two. So these lots are pre-existing, they have adequate frontage, and they don't create any new nonconformities. The plan can be endorsed as approval not required.
Okay. Does the Planning Board have any questions?
It's pretty straightforward to me.
Mary? No questions. Okay.
I make a motion to accept the... and to endorse this approval-not-required plan as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gail?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dylan?
They'll sign it, Bill, and I got a rubber band for you.
Oh, we had to sign.
Okay, thank you.
Pass it to Karen. Can I ever sign the bottom one?
Right here?
Actually, you can sign it. Anyone can sign it. Any representative...
Why are there two columns?
Excuse me?
You're filing bankruptcy.
Do we all sign on one side?
I think it was just for...
I would just sign on one line, Mary.
Yes. I think it was just for the number of people that might be here.
Oh, okay. All right. Just don't want to mess it up.
We're all signing here?
Yeah, you can all sign. Mary, can you put... You sign this one for my files.
Unless you want blue.
No, black is good. Scan better. Thank you.
After those comments are made, then if somebody has something brand-new to say with respect to 474 Main Street, 31 Ashumet Road, brand-new, not discussed before, they may get up to speak. We have a three-minute time limit. Please don't repeat what's been said. A lot has already been said, so I think... You can stay until they come up, so...
I'll stay until you open up the public hearing.
All right.
Have you opened up the...
No, no. I'm opening... I'm not opening the public hearing now. I'm going to let people speak on issues they want to speak on, and then I'm going to let them speak on this project here, but not first. First, I'll have... How many people want to speak on something other than Ashumet Road?
I do.
You do?
I want to speak about Oakway Highlands.
Okay. Yes, sir. Come up and give your name and...
Hi, my name's Timothy Dorsey. I've lived at eighty-six Blue Castle Drive for the last twenty-five years, and we're trying to turn Blue Castle into a public road. I spoke with Catherine Laurent of the DPW, and I guess there's a lot of irregularities that Jacques Morin is... She's not going to do anything further to bring this to fruit, to make this a public road, until Mr. Morin puts up stop signs, street signs, radar speed signs. They got failing culverts, and a whole list of other things that she mentioned. So I want to know what's going on. A year ago, I was in here. You made me write a complaint about this huge mound of dirt and the construction debris in violation of the town bylaws. I put it in writing. I made a complaint. That was a year ago, and everything's still there. So nothing's happening. The road won't progress to a public road until Mr. Morin, the builder, gets his act together and straightens out these problems, and so I'm just here to get some answers, I guess, to let you know what's going on.
I see, Mr. Dorsey, that the Town Planner's Administrative Assistant sent you a letter. Did you... You read that letter?
I read the specs of the subdivision, yes.
Okay, well, I'll read it out loud for the purpose of the people in the audience. "Hi, Tim. As a follow-up to your visit, attached is a special permit and a subdivision plan. All the items you were looking for can be found in these documents. Here's what the permit says. Lot area: ten thousand square feet, frontage: eighty-four feet, front setback: twenty-five feet, side and rear setbacks: ten feet. Evan said that Jacques still has to submit and as-built and perform certain maintenance tasks to one of the detention basins to the satisfaction of the consulting engineer." Ed, are you online now? Ed?
Yes, ma'am, Chairman, I'm here. And that is absolutely correct. Those are the final two items.
Just a point of order. This isn't listed on the agenda, so I would limit your discussion on the topic.
All right. Can we put this on the agenda for April... May fifteenth, then?
Okay, well, let...
I'll speak with the Chair on that prior to the next meeting, Tim.
Tim, let's reserve on that till I answer, ask you questions. If you want to do that...
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
We will put it on. All right. Sorry. That's right. This is not on the agenda, so this is just a comment. And the dirt pile, that's a building commissioner issue. That's what the letter says here, and we know that. We've discussed that many times.
Okay.
So...
I understand Mr. Lear has a couple of positions here at the town. One is to oversee the different departments. Do you oversee the building department also, Mr. Lear?
General. Yeah.
Oh, so you're aware... We spoke nine days ago, right?
We did.
And have you spoken to the building department about it?
I have.
Oh, okay, great. So what's going on with it, then?
The last I'm aware, the building commissioner reached out to Jacques Morin today and made a site visit. We are aware that of the dirt pile, there's still dirt. We know that substantial tonnage of dirt has been moved. We also know that the one property that has been the quote-unquote "material stockpile" has been mitigated but not totally removed. So David has gone out this afternoon to make a further evaluation, and he'll determine in his unique capacity, because I don't have the authority, if additional enforcement would be required. And I don't have the information tonight as to what the findings of his inspection were.
All right. Well, I'm just going to follow up with it, stopping once in a while.
Be happy to see you, Tim.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. There is... Now, I'm going to have to ask you to both leave, because there's a letter here I'm going to read from an abutter.
You're gonna open up the public hearing? Right? I'm not going to leave until you open up the public hearing. Open it up.
What's the letter regarding...
The public hearing is open. We're just continuing the public hearing tonight.
Okay, I understand. So public... The public comment section that Tim just spoke on, I would ask the audience if there are any additional comments on items unrelated to the agenda. When you're ready to open the public hearing, read in the notice, and Mary and I will depart.
Mashpee Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Forty-eight, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April third, 2024, at 7:10 PM in the Quaid Meeting Room at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider an application by Joel Junkera, property owner, requesting a special permit to construct and operate a four thousand... Actually, it should be six thousand square-foot commercial building for retail sale of plumbing and water-related products with accessory storage at a currently vacant property address as 31 Ashumet Road, 474 Main Street, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. Assessors map 27 dash 21A and 27 dash 21B. The subject lot is located predominantly in the C-three limited commercial zoning district with portions of the parcel bisected by the R-five zoning districts, and is located within the groundwater protection district and light industrial overlay district. This petition is made pursuant to the Mashpee Zoning Law by sections... by law sections 174 dash 24C1, 174-25E13, 174 dash 45.6D, Article thirteen, Groundwater Protection District, and 174 dash 25 dot one, standard for developments in C-three districts. Would you raise your hand if anyone here is going to speak on new material, new, brand-new, that's not been discussed? As you recall, most of you have probably been here before. Many of you have been here. I recognize your faces. That Mr. Fod spoke at length last time. I thought he covered pretty much the waterfront. Do you want to speak, Mohammed?
There is more difference, as you see.
Do you have something to say that's new and different?
Yes. But also, I have a question. I see the timer, you may skip to apply to everybody, doesn't it?
I'm not understanding you.
I repeat again, the timer over there, three minutes for everybody who will speak at the public hearing.
It's three minutes, sir, for everybody, whether it's a public hearing or no matter what it is.
Okay, good. Including the proponents.
Including what?
The proponent.
Mohammed, no. No, because I'll tell you why. You spoke an inordinately length of time, and I asked Mr. Corain to give a rebuttal, to give a counterargument here, and he is entitled to certainly as much time as you spent speaking to us last time and the time before, in fairness to everybody. Okay? So who of the... Who wants to speak and has a new issue to raise? Arden, you want to come up?
Okay.
Arden, do you want to come up?
We're doing it first?
Oh, okay, you're right. Thank you. Who is speaking on something other than Ashumet Road? No one. Who has something... I just want to get a hand show. Who is speaking on Ashumet Road and has something new and different to speak about? Arden?
Myself.
Okay, that's Mrs. Parknett. Okay. Arden, you want to come up first?
Okay. Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane. I'm sorry, I was not here at the last meeting, so I don't know exactly what was covered, so I apologize if I'm doing any repeating. I too am concerned. I was here two meetings ago. I too am concerned about this proposed use in my neighborhood, and so I started doing some digging on the application, and it appears that this use does not meet the zoning from the zoning use table, the proposed use 174-25E13. This use does not meet that requirement. Additionally, the plan shows significant outdoor storage in large undefined paved areas. Outdoor storage also is not an allowed use in this zoning district. It appears that this proposal also does not meet the requirements of the groundwater protection district, that there is more than fifteen percent impervious surface, and I don't know if a water quality report has been submitted, which is also a requirement. You know, a groundwater protection district. What's more important than that? You know, bare minimum, it needs to meet that. You know, clean water needs to be our priority, and this project needs to meet the terms of the groundwater protection district. What I don't understand is why an application that does not meet the zoning... I mean, this is the gatekeeper simplest issue that needs to be determined before an application is accepted. It seems to be an ongoing issue. You know, there's another application, there's another discussion later tonight that doesn't meet a general bylaw, yet the application was submitted. So I really don't understand what's going on, why applications that don't meet the basic gatekeeping requirements are being accepted. Do they... Is the policy that anybody can submit anything and hope that nobody's paying attention? Well, in this case, we are paying attention, and it's clear that this use is not allowed in this zoning district, and this project cannot be approved. Thank you.
Mr. Fod?
Fahad of Ashumet Road. The new things beside the previous stuff that I mentioned. The proposed...
Could you speak up, please, so I can catch it?
Yes, I am trying to adjust.
Put it a little closer to you, perhaps?
Yes. The proposed project is located in the Groundwater Protection District. Here I mention that I am giving more details about what previously Ms. Arden did mention.
I think you did discuss that in your last...
I did not give numbers, did I? I have numbers.
No, I didn't give numbers.
I did not give numbers. Sorry. So per the Groundwater Protection District zoning bylaw section 174 dash eighty and 174 dash eighty-one, only fifteen percent of the total project land area is allowed to be rendered impervious. Rendered impervious. We heard previously in the previous stuff how the proponent is saying six percent less than the fifteen. However, the proposed project in total...
Excuse me, Mohammed, if I may.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that our town's engineer can understand. Do you hear all this, Ed?
Yes, I am. I can hear very clearly.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, that's three seconds for me. The proposed project in total renders twenty-nine percent of the total land area impervious with pavement and a building. In the Groundwater Protection District, anything above fifteen percent is prohibited. This project must be denied. There is more details, going into details, but basically nineteen percent. It is more than fifteen percent. It should be denied based on that. And you do have in the bylaws that says a special permit may be approved only if it is determined that the proposed use or development is consistent with applicable bylaws. It does not. At least, with the issue with water. Now, the other points that I mentioned previously... I still have quite a bit of time. The other points that I mentioned previously, which is to do the usage, we have the proponent saying, oh, this is plumbing supplies, and he gave...
You've discussed that already.
Yeah. You have Wikipedia, so we have an opinion, and I have other opinions also, references. So it is an issue to be cleared out. But the second point is the entryway. The entryway via Ashumet Road didn't happen, and the entryway via 130 is allowed by the special permits.
Mr. Fod, you've already discussed that. Now you're repeating yourself.
Okay. Thank you for your time, then. Thank you.
Okay.
Dr. Mappo speak.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
This is my... Thank you.
Ms. Parknett?
Yes.
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm going to be very brief. You know how I feel. I'm not going to reiterate, but there's one thing that I did want to, as I have witnessed all of the traffic on the Cape and such. We're talking about big trucks. We're talking about...
Madam Chair, name an address for the record, please.
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. This is Diane Parknett, 2 Ashumet Road, Mashpee. And I said I'm not going to reiterate things that I said. You know how I feel about this being a neighborhood and so on, but I am concerned about the types, also in addition, the types of vehicles that'll be coming down the street. That is a dead-end street, okay? And it's big trucks. We're talking about fumes. We're talking about road damage after a while, you know, as we've seen in other places that allow these kinds of trucks and the kind of weight they're carrying, and they're going to be going at a certain... As I said before, they'll be slowing down. They're going to slow down from 130, then you're going to downshift, if I know anything about trucks. And if you're a diesel, there are going to be fumes. There are kids in the neighborhood. There are people in the neighborhood. There are also, you know, open pool at one of the condos where children and other people will be playing. So I just wanted to take... May I have you to take that into consideration, the safety and other things of the environment? That's all.
Thank you. I have a letter here that was emailed to us from Kimberly Whitney, 52 Old Colony Drive, and it is a bit... Some part is a little repetitious, but I don't know if she was here or not, so I will read it. It's pretty short. "I would like to see the following. Sinage. There's no indication on proposed plans as to what and where the business plan plans to put a sign. We do not want to see large building signs on Ashumet Road. They need to be on Route 130, Main Street, with an arrow directing vehicles to the entrance ahead on Ashumet Road. The other point is turnaround and on-street parking. Eighteen-wheel delivery vehicles will be arriving prior to the start of business hours. At any given time in the early morning hours, you can drive by any one of the three industrial roads adjacent to our street and see eighteen-wheel vehicles waiting for entrance to the delivery site. We don't want to see that on our residential roadway. A plan needs to be developed as to, A, where those vehicles are going to turn around, B, where they will park until the business opens. The three adjacent industrial park roads all have turnarounds at the very end. In a spirit of cooperation, we would like to see an area developed for those vehicles to make their turns. We do not want large trucks using Old Colony Estates or the condos for that purpose. B, where will these early arriving delivery vehicles park while they await the opening of the business? At the end of the day, the safe passage of vehicles, school buses, and pedestrians is at stake here, and the town needs to be clear on that." Thank you, Kimberly Whitney, Old Colony Drive. So with that, I call on the proponent, Representative Attorney Corain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant.
Mr. Corain, for those people who were not here or following it, in our last board meeting, we continued this hearing after Mohammed finished his recitation as to why this project should not go forward, and I asked you to prepare a response to his arguments.
Correct.
And do you have that response?
I do have that response. I provided to the board, to the planning department...
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing the applicant.
Mr. Corrane, for those people who were not here or following it, in our last board meeting, we continued this hearing after Mohammed finished his recitation as to why this project should not go forward. And I asked you to prepare a response to his arguments.
Correct.
And do you have that response?
I do have that response, I provided it to the board, to the planning department earlier this afternoon. I'm going to stick to that for tonight's purposes, and just address a couple of the minor comments from the letter.
If I may, does everybody have Mr. Corrane's letter in front of them? Just in case, do you have it? Yeah, do you have it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, please.
Great, thank you. So the first thing I want to address, because it seems to be made a big deal of, is that the fact that we're rendering more than 2,500 square feet, or 15% of the lot area is impervious that is prohibited under the groundwater protection district, that is absolutely and unequivocally incorrect, and a false statement of the bylaw. Under 174-82 of this zoning bylaw, under special permit uses, this board can grant a special permit for a project that renders impervious surface more than 2,500 square feet or 15%, provided that the stormwater management is provided to this board and reviewed, which has been by Ed Pesci, your consulting engineer. So I have to be clear on that. It is absolutely not prohibited by this bylaw to render more than 2,500 square feet or 15% of the square footages impervious. It's not prohibited by this bylaw, it's not prohibited by the groundwater protection overlay district. 174-82-4, special permit uses. I think we belabored the access issue. We have adequate access on Asshument, the bylaw prohibits us from using access onto 130, we don't have any rights over to anybody else's property, and so again, we comply with the bylaw in that respect. As far as not being able to, the plumbing, the plumbing use, you know, I provided the board with what I, you know, find to be a pretty good definition of what plumbing it is. It is apparatus that move wastewater and water, and that's what they sell. So maybe it's not faucets, maybe it's not toilets, but that doesn't make it any less plumbing. So I would, it's certainly within the board's discretion, there's no definition in the bylaw of plumbing, and so we provided, you know, the best definition that I could find of plumbing, I think it makes perfect sense. It deals with wastewater, it deals with water, and the dispersment of those types of things, along with many other things. So, you know, again, I certainly feel like we fall into the category of plumbing. You know, I would note that it may not even be required that we applied for that type of, you know, we asked for a specific, but number 12 under that bylaw says, "Any retail that has less than 300 trips a day," irrespective of what it is. So if I had just applied for 12, and just said, "Hey, it's retail, and there's less than 300 trips a day," I wouldn't be talking about plumbing, I wouldn't be talking about electric, I wouldn't be talking of any of that. So that's certainly something retail's allowed, these components go to an end user, it's sold, that's a retailer. So, you know, I think that we've, you know, really given the board everything it needs to, you know, vote tonight, I think we comply with all the bylaws' conditions, whether that's the table of uses, whether that's the C3 district, whether that's the groundwater protection overlay district. I think the only thing that's been brought up tonight that I agree with, that I think Mr. Pesci noted, is that we will absolutely provide this board with a water quality report. I think that if the board were to approve this project, it'd absolutely be conditioned on the satisfactory review by Mr. Pesci of a water quality report. And I'm happy to have that conditioned. If this board wants to condition anything about signage, I think we talked about it the last meeting, having a small sign saying, "E.J. Prescott here." If you want us to put a, you know, "Bus stop ahead" sign, something of that nature, I think my client's more than willing to put those types of things up to make it as safe as possible for everybody. You know, these trucks are not going to be traversing the whole expanse of Asshument Road. They're going to go from 130 to the entrance, which is the first entrance on the right as you get into this development. And as far as trucks, yes, there will be from time to time semi-trailers, they are not going to be coming, they may not necessarily come every day, and they're certainly not going to be on the hour, on the half hour, on the minute. They may be two on one day, and then 000, and then maybe one on the next day. So, and they're not, and they're not open on weekends. So again, I think our traffic is, you know, certainly will not be the, you know, as bad as people are making it out to be. If you look at the C3 zoning district, you know, there are lots of things that, you know, are allowed in the C3 zoning district. You could have an auto dealership in the C3 zoning district, you could have an auto repair shop in the C3 zoning district. So I think there are a lot more intensive uses that you could get a special permit for than what we're proposing in this particular project. And I would also note, you know, I think there's been a lot of talk about, well, you know, this is industrial, which I disagree with, but other than the lots that are on 130 that are in the C3 district, everything else is industrial. So basically, from Asshument Road, that triangle, the 130, all the way to the town lining sandwich on that side of 130, other than the lots that front 130 is all industrial, it's all I-1, and it's all light industrial. And light industrial allows for complementary uses to the principal use. So when you look at Nicoletta's Way, when you look at Echo Road, when you look at Evergreen Circle, other than the lots that front 130, everything else is in the industrial zone and the I-1 zoning district. So certainly, it is not incompatible, industrial uses are not incompatible, I'm not saying this is, but they're not incompatible with this area, because it's zoned. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think we've addressed everything, you know, Mr. Fod's letter, I think we've addressed, and the groundwater protection overlay district, again, it's not prohibited, it's just not a correct statement of fact for the bylaw. So.
Okay, let me ask you some questions. So Mr. Pesci has sent you an email on the water quality issue, so there's no problem with doing that, and that's for the purpose of the Board of Health saying, "This project will not create an adverse health risk."
Right, and there's no hazardous materials being stored, there's no manufacturing going on, I think they'll only keep a forklift there, so, you know, the impact of water quality is going to be negligible, I think, especially compared to what else is going on there. You have a landscaping materials, you know, that I think runs a bulldozer, a diesel bulldozer there, so, you know, and that backs up to the condominiums. You have offices that I'm sure are going to use a lot more flow than what's here. But again, we will absolutely provide that report, so, and if the board wants to make a...
No, I wonder, Mr. Corrane, if, you know, a site visit went over to 89 Industrial Drive, and that is definitely in the I district, because they have five contractor bays with bathrooms connected. We're not having any bathrooms here, we're not having, other than one bathroom.
Right, correct.
We're not having contractors on-site. Contractors will be coming to the site to buy.
Correct.
But they're not stationed on the site as a contractor in a contractor bay.
Yeah, a lot of what you see is, you know, the contractor bays, you see landscape companies coming in and out daily on Nicoletta's Way, on Evergreen Circle, that's not the case here.
Yeah. Mr. Fod said that the application must have a stormwater management plan, we have that, did we not get that?
I believe that is the case.
Okay.
I believe Mr. Pesci noted that we provided the majority of everything that's required, but we do need to provide the water quality.
And a planting plan, the plan shows plants.
Yes.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Pesci that in a minute. In terms of the hours of operation, would you just confirm that I've got it right here? Trash removal limited to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday only.
Okay.
Construction work restricted to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, no work on Sunday.
That's just for the building, because as I said...
For the building.
The use is not, the use, it doesn't, they're not open on the weekends for the use.
Right, no, this is just to build it. Hours of operation of business when it exists, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Right, and I think the hours get a little bit shorter, an hour shorter during the off-season, and no weekends.
Yeah, this has been an issue, and you can tell us how you plan to resolve this. You previously agreed that customers come to the business, and they can't park if it's not open. So how do you remedy that problem, that these big tractor-trailers don't park? Tell them they have to come when the place is open?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the best you can do, is that E.J. Prescott will let them know that our business operations are 8:00 a.m., and, you know, you can't come before then. I mean, that's the, that's all we can do.
Okay, so the turnaround that I think somebody was speaking about, or actually, this letter that I just read, that's not really a problem, because they can do the turnaround in the yard, can they not?
They could, yes.
There's no reason to go down to the end of the road or find another place to turn around.
That's correct, so if someone, no one would be turning around, even if, just for the sake of argument, they came before business hours?
Yeah.
They wouldn't go down and then turn around, they'd wait until it opened, and then they go in.
But where would they park?
I guess they would park in front of the building, if that were the case, but again, I think E.J. Prescott's heard the concern here.
Can I speak to that? Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction.
Yes, sir.
The gate for the property will be about 80 feet in, which is plenty of length for a tractor-trailer to pull onto the property, be off of Asshument Road, not even in the road layout, completely off the road.
And how many feet is a tractor-trailer?
The trailer body is 53 feet maximum, and about 20 feet for the tractor.
Okay.
And you wouldn't have more than one at any one time.
Okay, that answers the question. And as to the signage, I can speak to that. No signage has been, when you want signage, you're going to have to go to the design review committee.
That is correct.
I'm on that committee, and you're going to have to follow the bylaw.
That is correct.
So that's neither here nor there. Let me see here. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Corrane on the board?
Mr. Corrane, when we laid out that property years ago, there was a special permit that gave that property behind the right to access off of 130. I imagine you would have to pay for that, but how come you didn't explore that? Because that's, I was on the board at that time, and they set the special permit that you could come off of 130 and use that lot there.
Which one, where the office buildings are?
Yeah, right in the side there, that was under special permit.
We don't own it, and we don't have the control...
You would have to pay for that, that, right.
And we have adequate access off of Asshument.
I don't think the people would mind this project if you went off of 130. And I'm telling you now, I can't accept this project with your trucks going down on Asshument Road, so...
They're not going down, they're going to one, the first entrance off of Asshument. We comply with the bylaw.
I stated my point, and I asked you if you could do that, but...
I mean, how are we going to do that? They have a parking lot with cars there.
It's on the special permit. I asked you that last meeting to look into that, and I say you didn't do that, so...
It's just not feasible.
It's the money, that's probably the main problem.
Well, and you're interrupting an existing business.
Okay, all right, that's all I have to say.
Would this business have to get an easement to go through that land?
Yes, absolutely.
And are the landowners there required to give an easement?
No, I could say no.
It's on the special permit, years ago when we set that up, that they could have access to that lot back there. But they have to talk it over and stuff.
Any other questions from the board? Yes.
I do. I'm sensitive to the residential road Asshument, and the concerns of the folks, and I'm also aware of 18-wheeler truck drivers that come in from afar, or not so far, but afar, and they need a place to park if things aren't open. I noticed that you have, you said you have 80-foot space available. I, to respect the residential nature of the street, I would like to see if you're amenable to having signs, "No parking, no standing," at least from 130, at least as far as the folks would need it, on either side of the road, no parking, no standing, to be enforced. And if that's something that's...
If that would be conditioned by the board, I don't think my...
I didn't hear you.
If it was conditioned by the board, I wouldn't object to it.
Okay.
So that's fine.
We asked last, we asked last time to put up signage, I asked that.
And I agreed, and I agreed at that time as well.
Okay, and we've already discussed, the outdoor storage materials are not going to be shown, because they're with a solid wooden fence.
That's correct.
And they can't be higher, the pile can't be higher than six feet.
That is correct.
The fence is eight feet, and this is six feet.
Correct.
Any other questions? Is there anything else that you want to talk about? I'm going to call Mr. Pesci now for some other answers.
Nothing new, it just, it just seems that it's, there's a path forward for an entrance way on 130, and, you know, the folks around, that surround the abutters seem to be, they'd be for it. There's a path forward, I think we need to explore that, that path forward.
Mr. Pesci.
Yes?
Yes, hi. Our consulting engineer. Just to clear up, Mr. Fod had said, the application, is the stormwater management plan adequate that we have? Is it correct?
So the stormwater management plan is adequate, it does, as I mentioned in my email to you yesterday, and C.C., Attorney Corrane, and others, I did mention that most of the water quality report requirements are contained already in the stormwater drainage analysis study. So it would be a simple matter for them to add some additional items that are not in there regarding faucets and nitrogen loading, which is typical, and to prepare that report. And I actually had the opportunity to speak to, I received a call from one of their senior project managers, Zachary Brzezinski, who stamped the plan from, from the engineering company, from, I'm drawing a blank, why am I drawing a blank? From Brackett Engineering, thank you. I've worked with them for 20 years, and I draw a blank. Anyway, I've spoken to Zach Brzezinski today, and went over the items that I felt he needed to focus on to prepare that report, he has no problem doing that, so I feel pretty confident that he'll prepare the report. And I told him that I would recommend to the board that that report be submitted for my review, as the plans and drainage analysis report were, and that he would be obligated as a condition, if the board saw fit, to close the hearing and vote tonight, he would be obligated as a condition of approval to revise that report or provide revisions to the site plan as I so directed. So he agreed to that verbally to me today. So I think Attorney Corrane can probably corroborate that as well, but I know he had a family emergency or family commitment tonight that he couldn't make it tonight, but I was actually glad that he called me because of that, so I could go over the water quality report. But I know from my April 2nd engineering review letter report, there are a couple items still, they're minor technical items in nature, that are, in my opinion, not substantial enough to hold up this decision, but those stormwater management comments are in that review report, as well as some other site plan comments, some of which the applicant has responded to, such as providing lighting plan. But those review comments also need to be responded to and revised plans provided, reminded review, and to my satisfaction on behalf of the board. Once that's done, and the water quality report is reviewed and finalized, I would provide a letter for the file saying that that has been satisfactorily, they've satisfactorily accomplished those two conditions, or satisfied those two conditions, so they could move forward towards a building permit. I also like to offer something else that, for the board's consideration, if it'll help with some comfort and confidence about the roadway construction. I really don't have any reservations about the roadway construction, I believe the roadway construction is similar, if not identical, to what was done on Industrial Drive, and the, this construction on Evergreen Circle and Echo down the road, Echo Road down the street. I don't consider there to be any damage as a result of the truck traffic, the very low truck traffic they're going to have, the truck traffic they are going to have. But if the board feels more comfortable, I heard one of the board members just now talking about signage, no parking signage, you could add a condition that two years after construction, that that roadway be inspected by me and the applicant to look and see if there's any damage from truck traffic in use, and that they take appropriate action to make repairs. And so you can put that as a condition if you prefer, that's just an offer to add some comfort and confidence in your decision-making tonight.
Would the board like that condition put in?
I don't think it's a bad condition.
No.
Yeah.
I think they've been concerned about the quality of the road, this will guarantee that it's not going to just...
That makes sense.
So, Mr. Pesci, so is there anything more you need, other than what you've said, that we have to have for a final update on your engineer view review of this project?
No, I just need to have a response to my original April 2 letter with revised plans, now that it looks like they have some clear guidance here that can do that. Again, that should be a condition of approval. I will note that, I think Attorney Corrane, just to corroborate his opinion, I would also... I, I will note that I think Attorney Corain, just to corroborate his opinion, I would also endorse his opinion of the interpretation of zoning bylaw under the Water Protection District, that in spite of the fact, there is a phrase in there in the bylaw that requires you to have less than 15% or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater impervious. It is allowed if, and I'll read from the, the bylaw section four in 174-82, A4, that provided that a system of, of stormwater management and artificial recharger precipitation is developed in which is designed to prevent untreated wet discharges to wetlands, and it goes into a number of factors, including managing peak discharges and volumes of runoff, minimize erosion and sedimentation, not result in significant degradation of groundwater. The approach and design for their stormwater management system follows the stormwater management policy, stormwater management guidelines by Massachusetts. So I, I feel that it does apply here and that they have satisfied that section of the bylaw. So I, I believe that this is allowed in the Water Protection Overlay District, Water Protection District in this case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pesci. I provided, and it should be in your packet, a page. I did try to do my research and basically the question was, is the business on 474 Main Street, 31 Ashman Road project allowed in a C3 zoning district based on the Table of Use regulations? And this is what I, I came up with and, and I, I can't find something perfect, absolutely perfect. So this was the best, and I concur with Mr. Corain on this. The applicable, the applicant relies on 174-25E13 Plumbing Supplies, Principal Retail Business and Consumer Service Establishments that can only be built in the C1, 2, or 3. Now you notice in that, in that grouping there lumber is added. So just picture a lumberyard, there's going to be stuff all over the place, inside and outside. This particular facility has 4,700-plus square feet of storage in the warehouse.
Correct.
So it'll be in two places, probably the bulk of it will be in the warehouse. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so now, Mr. Fod has said you can't build in the C3 because the proposed business is not a plumbing supply business, but rather fits in a G9 category of uses, principal industrial wholesale and transportation uses, identified only as wholesale business and storage. In that case, you can only build in the I1. I don't think that is a more fitting use table than what we just talked about, the first one. There's another one here which could apply and allow C1, C2, C3, I think, and I1. It allows all three of those Cs and one I1 that's in the G6. It's a wholesale business and storage in a roofed structure. A roofed structure would mean there'd be storage inside there. Nothing in this particular section precludes any outdoor storage. And I think something was misleading here when the site visit was to 89 Industrial Drive. Everything over there is industrial and contractor bays are where it's at over there.
Correct.
Contractor bays and bathrooms. And, and I, I just repeat what I said a minute ago, there, there are no contract, contractor bays proposed, no contractors are going to be working on the premises, they're going to be visiting the premises to purchase. So it's a different business altogether and I believe it is allowed in the C3. Does anybody have any further questions?
Yeah, I, I have a follow-up question to Ed Pesci. I'm looking at pre-development watershed plan. It, it talks about your subcatchment areas, 1 through 5S. And my question is with 5S, which is at the very corner, which is the, the residential area portion of, of the property, and it shows a, a flow path, A, B, to C downhill, going from the far side over to a Schumet Road and spilling out to the road. Is there any, any way of addressing the spillage? I know that is undisturbed area from this proponent, this project, but it still shows rainwater or stormwater running onto the Schumet Road.
Ed, did you hear, Rob?
Excuse me, I was muted. I was just bringing up the stormwater report so I can address your question. And I'm going to that, pre-development, did you say? Pre-development?
Yeah, pre-development watershed plan. I'm not sure just what page it is. It has a, it's a colored plan.
Yep, I, I, I know what it is, I'm just trying to find it. So I can, I can explain it to you. It's a standard way we look at and model drainage areas. So it is, it is absolutely correct with the way that they've drawn it. I have to look at that, I definitely have to look at that. And I'm going to share my screen, Madam Chair, just so everyone can see what we're talking about. And Rob, you can tell me if this is what you meant.
Uh, yes.
Okay, so there's, in the drainage report, there's a pre-development, so this is the existing condition. And then there's a post-development, as you can see, the building is here. So let me zoom in on what he's talking about. And this is how you model the current peak flow and, and, and amount of flow by looking at the flow path. So they, you break up the, the property into small drainage areas and drainage area 5S, you determine the longest flow path for a particle of water to start in that, in that drainage area and end in the discharge. It just so happens that today, some of the water, just like lots of properties, just about every property on that street, some of the water discharges on a Schumet Road. That's why you have a slight drainage swale on the Schumet Road. So they're not altering this, so they're not obligated to change any of that. And that's not contaminated water, if you will, it's not, it's not water that's, that's got stormwater, you know, components in it. It's simply the path in an extreme storm event, most storm events won't even leave that, that, that drainage area. 5S will not have any discharge, okay? But in extreme storm events, 25 years and up, you'd have some discharge there. Their manage, their requirement is to manage the stormwater going from A to B, A to C here, and A to C in every location in the post-development, so it does not exceed the pre-development. So you can't create, obviously they're creating more impervious, right? So you're creating more impervious, you're going to be creating more runoff. Well, yes, but they have to develop stormwater management systems that control that peak rate of runoff, which they have done. So to answer your question, there, there, there's no need for additional treatment or control of that runoff, it's simply clean, you know, rainwater that falls like anywhere else in a, in a wooded deciduous forest, deciduous and pine forest, anywhere else in, in town. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just, it just looked, you know, unmanaged, but it's undisturbed and it's clean and it's not, it was worthy of discussion.
Okay, no, it, it's good to get clarification, just for your clarification.
Ed, Mr. Fod also had an issue about the planting plan. Can you go to that map and show us why this plan is adequate?
I'll get to that real quick. Okay, I'm going to share my screen to show you that. So the zoning bylaw calls for a planting plan and they provided what's called a layout zoning and landscaping plan. The landscaping plan, along with some landscaping details that were shown here in this last page, the landscaping plan, I believe, is definitely a synonymous term and it definitely meets, meets the status or meets the definition for that, for that, for that requirement. So again, just to reiterate for the board's benefit, the dark green, the dark green is area of trees that is not being disturbed, existing trees that aren't being disturbed. The orange area is area that will be partially disturbed temporarily, but then restored after construction. The light green is going to be area that is disturbed, but going to become lawn. And then, as you can see, there are trees along the perimeter here of the southwest or southeast corner near the office lot, so-called office lot there, as well as some trees around the entrance, at the entrance around the proposed detention basin. So in my opinion, the, the planting plan is provided with this plan in the detail sheet at the very end.
And the disturbed part, the orange part, what will they do with that when they're done with that?
So I'll, I'll zoom in on the note regarding that. So area to be temporarily cleared for construction and restored or allowed to renaturalize upon completion of work. So they'll probably long and seed that as well and board can certainly ask for them to provide some diversity, diversity of planting, some shrubbery there, that's native species of shrubbery that would, would tend to blend in well with the surrounding forested area.
Would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
In on, okay. Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Pesci? Any else? I don't have questions.
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pesci.
Madam Chair, I just have one other thing I just wanted to mention to the board.
Yes.
I, I realize there's a lot of discussion about, this is a difficult one when you're talking about access in 130, see access in 130 question, I'll just offer this for your consideration. Generally, you certainly can ask an applicant to speak to an abutter and say, can you work something out? But I don't think the board can compel him to do that, compel the applicant to do that. I think it is reasonable to ask and I think, you know, Dennis's opinion is very valid, that he was part of this board when, when a special permit was given before. But I believe that the access is still legal and reasonable off of a Schumet Road, although I know there are others that disagree, but I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ed.
All right. Any, anything else? We're at the end of the road here.
No, I don't have anything further. I appreciate everybody's time. I know it's been a, a long process through this, but I certainly appreciate your time and your consideration of the project.
I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing on 474 Main Street, 31 and Schumet Road.
I'd like to speak, please.
You want to speak?
I have something to add, if I could.
Okay, come up.
My name's Antonio Brum and I live at 96 Old Colony Drive. And I think what I'd like to suggest, which we haven't looked at, is I drove a tractor-trailer before. If we don't widen the road of a Schumet, it's going to be difficult for a truck to make a right onto that, onto a Schumet. If you look at Echo Road and the other roads, they're much wider openings for the trucks. Secondly, just to be able to turn into that driveway, how tight that's going to be for that truck to make that turn? Now, yes, that driveway is almost directly across from the entrance to a Schumet, I'm sorry, to Old Colony Estates. That land that there's a bit of a fence on, which is across from them, is owned by Old Colony Estates. So, you know, that road, I don't know what you can do to widen that, but I'd like to suggest, maybe we get three professional truck drivers to give us their opinion on making that turn in there. I just think it's going to be real tight unless, I just think that we should at least look at that, the difficulty of getting an 18-wheeler in there to make that turn. That's all.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If I close this hearing tonight, we can't do anything else. Do you have any thought about that, Mr. Corain?
No, I'd just like to move forward. I mean, this, Schumet Road's no, no narrower or wider than Industrial Drive and tractor-trails get in, I don't know that are there with no issue, so. I know it's not an issue.
All right, so.
Madam Chair, I can offer this as part of the condition, which, which still affords you the opportunity to close the hearing tonight. Part of the condition is they respond to Pesci Engineering Review comments, your consulting engineering review comments, and I can make sure that the project engineer has taken a look at that turning radius with a tractor-trailer truck. And if he has to widen it, it's really only the one side of the driveway, but he can widen both of them, but if he can widen that driveway slightly, you know, so much the better. He's already, you know, 24 feet, it's pretty standard practice to provide a, a 24-foot travelway, and it looks like he's got at least 15-foot radius. So I can ask him to consider adding, you know, as part of revising plans, which he still has to do in response to our comments, I can ask him to, to take a look at that.
Would you be agreeable, Mr. Corain? So that would be a condition of the special permit decision? Anything else before we close this hearing? Because no more testimony will be allowed after the hear, after we close. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say this, the difference between Echo Road.
You need to come up here.
Yes. The difference between Echo Road and those streets off of 130.
Your name.
Is Diane Parknett. And this is a neighborhood. This is, we're talking about Old Colony, there's a bus stop. There are things there that are not on Echo Road. When you're talking about a tractor-trailer going down in the business area, there are businesses there. We have families, children, and things like that. There's the difference.
Diane, your, your point is well taken.
Thank you.
You did tell me that, tell us that.
Well, I'm hearing about, we can widen, you know, this, but you're widening it into what? And, and who is, who is there? Neighbors, houses? You're talking, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will take a motion to close the public hearing on this project.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that unanimous?
Yep.
Unanimous.
And you're on, on this too? Yes, thank you. All right, so now I will do, we'll have a roll call vote on this. May, I'll, I'll give you the motion because I had to make sure it's said exactly right. Not that you can't do it, because you can. May I have a motion to approve the application for a special permit for applicant to construct a 6,000-square-foot commercial building for retail sales of water-related products with indoor and outdoor storage, subject to all conditions enumerated by our consulting engineer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any, any second?
I'll second the motion.
You're seconding it, and you say aye. You say aye?
For what?
Of the motion to approve the application for special permit.
No.
Aye?
No.
Aye.
Three to two, so it doesn't pass, because it has to be a super majority. Three, three in favor? Two opposed. Christie, Chrissy? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Corain.
Thank you.
Ms. Drunkara.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Your community will love you.
The people are bold.
Good job.
All right, we'll take a, a two-minute recess here. By, maybe three minutes.
Maybe three minutes.
There's no, I don't read a public hearing notice.
No, public hearing's closed.
It's closed, yeah.
Yes.
As far as I know.
So, I'm assuming that whatever shows up here shows up on TV and on video and everything.
Exactly.
It's actually pretty nifty.
You can hear?
It's nifty for us, but now you guys can see.
Well, you know, it's weird, this is a little, this is a, sorry, Jack, I don't mean to be pointing at you, but that's a little distracting, because I can, Karen's over here, but I see her in the corner, and I'm like...
Well, I found myself watching.
Yes, and everybody's looking, I'm like, why is everybody looking over there? There's a screen over there.
You see the back of people.
Added improvement on TV.
Hey, Evan.
How are you?
I just want to let you know, the audio is great.
Much better.
Much better.
So, Chris Ball was here, I don't know if you noticed.
What's that?
Chris Ball, the executive director of Mashpee TV, came in to listen. Oh, you missed him, you missed him.
Oh, yes, I did see him.
He did, he came in, he came in. He had just, on the way home from Boston. Yeah. We did all the mundane things.
Okay, we're back on the record. It's 8:15. The next thing we have to look at is continued deliberation and potential vote on the 275 Quinna Questet Avenue application submitted by Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC to modify the Willow Bend Country Club special permit. We have prepared, or town planner has prepared, a planning board decision, proposed, a draft planning board decision, which is the combined decision of town council and the planning board comments. And has everybody read through it?
Yeah, quickly.
Quickly, he read through it quickly?
Yeah.
Have you read it?
I'm not sitting on this.
Oh, you're not sitting on it? Have you read it?
I've read it.
So, every, the supermajority has read it, except you're not sure, Dennis, have you read it?
Yeah, I read, yeah.
All right. So, do we need to go through this page by page?
Just let me know if there are any additional changes or edits or clarifiers that need to be had and incorporated into any final document. We didn't go over much the last meeting, so I want to be firm, I want to ensure I have clarity as to what you want to incorporate if it's not already in this draft, so I can ensure adequate capture of your vote in the written document prior to this filing with the clerk. So, if there's anything else, I think notably, it would just be the identification of the plan sheets that need revision dates, which I would enumerate in the draft, which I think we had already identified as sheets C.4.0...
This is on page six.
...through C.5.2. You could cite revision dates for every other sheet. Those are the sheets that Ed would be requiring revisions of, and so I would note that in the decision.
Well, that's...
Hey, I have a point of order here.
Yes.
The board has put a lot of effort into this.
A lot, yes.
Yes. I'm not totally in agreement with it, and by accepting this, I may not vote in favor of it, because I do have other concerns that are not conveyed in this document, so...
Can you cite those concerns?
Yes. Brief, do I get my three minutes?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Briefly, I think Mashpee is in a water quality crisis. It is a, one, it's affordable housing and water quality are the two top hitters on the...
Correct.
And this addresses the water quality mitigation that's going to complement additional bedrooms that have already been violated by, like, 100 bedrooms in excess of the special permit. So, there's a mitigation plan in here to remedy a couple of cranberry bogs and restore it to near-natural conditions, and provide three billing lots for affordable housing, which is great to have that, and some cash as well with that. I think this, over the entire country, Massachusetts and Cape Cod in particular, the EPA has, over the years, tightened water quality issues, and...
The DEP?
The DEP, yeah, and the EPA and the DEP.
And the EPA, national.
And I think that trend is going to continue. Additional requirements, nitrogen, all kinds of stuff. 30 years ago, we created a sewer commission because we were appraised, advised of our water, you know, conditions dwindling or quality dwindling. We had Dartmouth College, along with the tribe, doing monitoring, along with some other organizations, and the water quality is diminishing more rapidly than expected. We're at a crucial point. I think improve, and Mashpee has spoken, they approved Phase One of a five-phase comprehensive water, you know, sewage plan. We have a nitrogen management plan, we have even a tree ordinance that's going to help in the environment. There's a number of things out there, and Mashpee is spending their money on the sewage plan. A week from now, they're going to vote for Phase Two, more millions of dollars out of taxpayer pockets. They're serious about it. There's a violation of the standing special permit that's out there about bedroom count, over 100, in excess of that 853 or whatever it is. And I think you break the law, you should pay the ticket, you know? And I think that the cranberry bogs that are being remedied here or proposed is insufficient. It will, what they do, and restore those bogs to natural, when you consider the rest of the bogs on the Southworth Mashpee Properties, there's a ton of, I won't say a ton, there are many, many larger bogs out there. Fixing the two that they're going to fix, or propose to fix, will not even significantly reduce the nitrogen going down Quaker Run or whatever it is. I propose, and I'd like to see, because laws, regulations are going to be even more stringent as time goes by, I would like to see a proposal by this board, and that there's an opportunity here for the board and Southworth Properties to really take a leadership role in taking all of the cranberry bogs out of production and restoring them to a near-natural condition. That would be a property management breakthrough, you know, for, it's probably, you know, a dollar value, I don't know what that would be, but is it an opportunity to take a real leadership role in fixing, or at least attempt to fix, a lot of nitrogen going into our water embankments and so forth? So, I think it's a trivial amount that is being proposed for getting permission to add additional bedrooms to the property, so...
Mr. Town Planner, I just have a problem with the rules of the road here. If we ask a question or we have an opinion about something, I mean, basically, we're deliberating right now, are we not? Yeah, we can't, we can't, like, we can't ask the applicant. This is what we have in front of us.
Right.
This is what we have in front of us.
Right.
Yeah. I'm fine with the changes that have been proposed that are in this draft special permit. There's some red lines and stuff, but I'm fine with them all being accepted so that we can vote on it. I, I think the number of bedrooms is excessive. You see it as a different way.
You say excessive?
I think the number of bedrooms is excessive. It's not in compliance with their special permit. We heard from town council that that's a type of density limit that was accepted, and also it exceeds what our flow-neutral bylaw allows. So, it doesn't comply with those two things. Our bylaw says it has to be consistent with our regulations, it's not. Otherwise, we can't approve it. It also says it can't adversely, you know, the whole thing about the flow-neutral bylaw, the whole purpose is to have projects in compliance with groundwater standards and the preservation of the environmental qualities of the town. So, you can't make a finding that this will not have an adverse impact on public health, safety, surface water, groundwater quality, estuine systems, waterways, and fisheries, because it's not in compliance with the flow-neutral bylaw. The way I understand it is ultimately, because this is a sewer system they have, it'll be the sewer commission that will make the finding whether... It doesn't, that, but the flow-neutral bylaw is very specific about if you develop new land, how many bedrooms you can have per 10,000 square feet. It doesn't, and it's for sewered projects and unsewered projects. But it's the sewer commission on a sewer system that they have. That's not how I understand it. We have a regulation that we're responsible to note while we're making this decision. If we can't approve something that we clearly know does not fit into a regulation, and this regulation, it applies townwide, it applies to this, and it, the flow-neutral bylaw, when this project is not in, consists... Let me say this, the question that cannot be answered tonight, that I wanted an answer for, that I never got from anybody in authority, never got it. This is a, Willow Bend is a unique situation in that it has a treatment facility, I guess it's a pretty high-end treatment facility, and they're only at 80% capacity. So, if they built 12 units, I'm guessing there would be less nitrogen coming down the groundwater and going into the water than there would be with three big houses with 12 bedrooms on an IA system, they'd have to have an IA system. I did some back-of-the-envelope calculation, and it's really... You did some calculations? Yeah, I don't have it with me, but remember, it's a flow-neutral bylaw, it's not a nitrogen-loading bylaw. And so, flow-neutral applies whether you're connected to a private or public wastewater treatment facility. It's a flow, it's not, it's not how much nitrogen's in that water, what's the concentration of the load. So, my question is, does the DEP regulations at Willow Bend have trumped the flow-neutral, our local bylaw here? No. I don't have the answer to that. We have to be consistent, we can only approve a special permit, a special permit modification if it's consistent with our local bylaws and regulations, including zoning bylaws, including flow-neutral bylaw, including the tree bylaw. It's like, if we see something that's outrageously not in compliance, we need to say no. That's what our, that's what our bylaw says, that's what 17424C2 says. The other concern I have on your side, where you are, is in favor of this, you know, I read Andy Gottlieb's paper on if we do this, if we say yes to this plan and we get in trouble with DEP, we could lose our 0% SRF financing and all that other... That was his comment on the housing production plan. Yeah, that was on the housing production plan. That was very upsetting, and that was, you know, what was promulgated, and I think that's where we listened to it. I think a lot of people are seeing the flow-neutral bylaw as ensuring the 0% financing, which is true, but it also allows us to clean up our water. You know, if we don't stop increasing flow, we will never clean up our water. We're not searing the town for status quo, we're searing the town for improvement. And if we keep adding more flow as we're searing, it's like we're not doing anything. That's the whole point of the flow-neutral bylaw. It's, when you read the purpose of the flow-neutral bylaw, it doesn't say, I'm here because I want 0% financing. It says, it's to make sure that everything is in compliance with our groundwater standards and preservation of our environmental qualities of the town. It's a pro-clean-water, pro-environment bylaw. It's more than just the 0% financing. Well, I guess we'll find out if we were right, if you were right. We will find out. Most definitely. So, I mean, I'm good with saying this is what we're voting on, to accept all these changes that town council made, that we made. I'm good with taking a vote tonight, to tell you the honest truth. How many want to take a vote tonight?
I'd just soon vote tonight, yeah.
Do you want to vote tonight? Do you want to vote tonight? Do you want to vote tonight? I think a lot of people are seeing the flow neutral bylaw as ensuring the zero percent financing, which is true, but it also allows us to clean up our water. You know, if we don't stop increasing flow, we will never clean up our water. We're not searing the town for status quo, we're searing the town for improvement. And if we keep adding more flow as we're searing, it's like we're not doing anything. That's the whole point of the flow neutral bylaw. It's, it, it, when you read the purpose of the flow neutral bylaw, it doesn't say, I'm, I'm here because I want zero percent financing. It says, it, it, it's to make sure that everything is in compliance with our groundwater standards and preservation of our environmental qualities of the town. It's, it's a pro-clean water, pro-environment bylaw. It's more than just the zero percent financing.
Well, I guess we'll find out if we were right, if you were right, we will find out. Most definitely.
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm good with saying this is what we're voting on, to accept all these changes that Town Council made, that we made. I'm goo, I'm good with taking a vote tonight, to tell you the honest truth.
How many want to take a vote tonight?
I'd just soon vote tonight, yeah.
Me too.
Do you want to vote tonight? Do you want to vote tonight? Do you want to vote tonight? Okay, so, motion? Let me call the motion, please.
Yeah.
Motion to approve Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC application to modify the Willabon Country Club's special permit to the terms of the Planning Board's final draft special permit decision. Roll, call, vote.
No, you have to get a motion in a second.
A motion, right.
First and a second.
You second it?
I second it.
Who first, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I wouldn't make the motion as the chair, I would call somebody to make, to affirm, make.
Why can't you call it as the chair?
I wouldn't, we've never done that.
Why not? Tell me, you know, this is my problem, Mary, I not, I, I want to know what the rules are, and I don't have the rules.
Make the motion, Dennis, please.
I make a motion.
I make that motion.
Two.
Here. It is helpful to make the motion and the affirmative and then a vote accordingly.
Pardon me?
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis, make the motion.
I got the top here. Oh, what are we voting?
I make a motion to approve Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC application to modify Willabon's Country Club's special permit to the terms of the Planning Board's final draft special permit decision.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, just call for discussion, just formally.
Is there anyone just wants to discuss this?
So I think you all know I'm, I'll be voting no.
Okay, you vote, I'll roll call vote, Mary Wagon.
No.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
No.
I haven't voted, okay, go ahead.
Uh, no.
Rob?
No.
He can't vote.
He'll still vote.
Oh, he can't vote? Okay, so we're at?
Three to two. Oh, I don't know either.
I have Mary, no, Mike, yes, Dennis, no, Rob?
No.
No.
Okay.
I wish I had the insight, I know, I'm the last vote.
You can abstain, doesn't matter.
No, I don't want to abstain. Yeah, I have to abstain, I, I have to, my conscience tells me I need to abstain.
So.
Since we voted no, we have to, we have to describe why we voted no. So this is why I'm voting no.
Now, what is this document?
So you can't just vote no, you have to give a specific reason why you're voting no, because it has to go, it has to like go in.
Where did this come from?
I wrote it, I'm gonna read it.
Did we give us a reason why we voted no to the previous project?
Yeah. Well, you better come up with something in your decision, you better, you have to re, you voted, you have to render a decision, you still have time to render that decision, and you still have time to explain why you voted no. But this is why I'm voting no. Do you want me to read it out loud, Karen?
Why don't we all just take a minute and read it ourselves?
Yeah.
Did Attorney McAliny get a copy of this?
No, because, because our public hearing is closed, Karen.
He'll get the notice of decision after his file.
Okay, you get the notice.
Yeah. With all due respect. So, so if you're voting no, you should come up with a reason, you can, you can agree that with me that it's the flow neutral bylaw, you can agree with me that it has to do with the bedroom count exceeding their special permit.
Does that have to be written, or could they?
No, but you should, you should, because I think in the decision.
I'm gonna make sure it's captured appropriately in the findings, like, for example, Mary on this document has enumerated per the zoning bylaw, section 17424C2, she can't make certain findings. In your current draft, it, if, it establishes that you've made that finding, I will modify that section in accordance with this document, should the board generally agree with it. Since you aren't, you haven't been able to establish those findings, the decision should clarify that to articulate the rationale for your denial, as Mary's articulated.
Because it will just get remanded back, if we just vote no, and it gets appealed, it'll just get remanded back, and then we have to, then you end up having to write something like this, so. So are you good, do you agree with this?
I agree with everything except, I like to, I went around the neighborhood, all that area, and a lot of the people were against that project, they wanted to leave it natural, all the three houses that they, they have the right to put in.
So you can have, you can, you can say that you, you've voted no.
For over the bedroom count, I mean, everything you said except.
Okay, but you also feel it'd be, it would have a significant adverse.
A detrimental impact on abutting property.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's from seat to the same section of the bylaw.
Okay.
Okay.
So you, you want to bring in the abutters, I agree with you. What do you think, Rob?
Well, I, I'm a bedroom count, put me down for the bedroom count exceeding, and, yeah, I, I didn't mention neutral flow, but.
You want to hold on the neutral flow?
Yeah, and I, I thought the mitigation for, oh, not the mitigation, but the agreement to take out so many bogs for, out of production and, and fix the river.
Mitigation plan, which is their mitigation plan.
Right, right, their mitigation plan does not go far enough. That's basically for the continued violation of the bedroom count, which goes into the neutral flow aspect, their mitigation plan is far less than I would expect.
Okay. So we still have time, right?
You do.
Okay. So it gets typed up and then signed?
I would need upon completion of the draft, the signature of one board member. And then that document would be filed with the town clerk, who would also sign it at that time.
All right.
At the time of that filing, the appeal period commences, we send out a notice that the decision has been filed to all persons of interest, which is the abutting property owners and the applicant, of the decision and where it can be viewed within that period of time, any aggrieved individual or entity has the right to file an appeal.
Do you mind if I'm that person that comes and signs it?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Rob?
What's, what's that?
That I review and sign the document?
Yes, fine with me.
Okay, we're moving on? I wonder what the score is, the score, the South.
I love you, Dennis.
Just noted for the board, we still have forty-seven days to file our decision.
All right.
Well.
We'll get it done sooner than that.
When, yeah.
We won't, we'll get, but, you know. There is some time.
I may be dead by then.
Don't say that, Dennis.
All right.
All right, um.
LCP.
Just give me a minute here, please.
Yeah.
Next issue is continue review of draft implementation table of the local comprehensive plan update. We have here. The land use and growth management, does anybody have an issue with the goals, policies? Any, any issue with the goals?
First one, just a little clarity, I think I put the word natural beauty in there myself, I don't know, but I would say natural beauty and environmental quality, because environmental quality is the technical term.
Okay.
And get rid of cultural and historic.
No, no, I'm struggling, I like where we're going with and cultural and historic amenities, but it's kind of like, it's almost like, I want to say, and our culture, do you know what I mean? Because it's not like a rock or a building, we have a living history here, you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, you know.
What is it, what is it you want to say?
I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Natural beauty, environmental quality, culture and historical amenities.
Yeah.
Yeah, does that sound a little, okay.
Yeah.
And you want to change the natural beauty to the environmental?
And environmental quality.
If I understand, maintain and enhance Mashpee's small-town character, natural beauty and environmental quality, culture and historical amenities.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any goal, any of the goals?
The next one I think is too big, I think it's too big, I think it should just be, I think all those things should be split off.
Okay.
Into like policies or actions, and it should just say.
End at capacity?
I just, no, I think it should be, ensure development is consistent with town priorities. Do you know what I mean? Or like establish priority needs of the town. And then we could say such as clean water and housing, do you know what I mean? But I think that there's so much in there.
We could break them out into smaller goals, if there's just too much.
And I think that whole growth projection should be like, I think we should bump that down into figuring out what our growth projection is, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because we haven't established it.
There is an action relative to establishing a buildup population in consideration of the regulatory changes that you're contemplating in the plan.
Yes.
So, I mean, I would, I would assert that there, that action is supported by the policies which is supported by that goal, but I wouldn't necessarily argue with you on the congested nature of the goal itself.
It's so.
I could see, I could see it split up.
Yeah, I think that should be.
The clause further degradation of Mashpee's polluted water bodies is prevented in traffic, flowing congestion, that could be another, or, you know, some form of that could be another goal.
We combine too many things into that one.
I, I might suggest that we keep this as a sentence and as goal LU two, which is ensure development is consistent with current and future growth projections and is responsive to infrastructural capacity and resource availability, period.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And then a new goal, ensure development is providing adequate housing for family and individuals to be stably housed, period. We should probably mirror whatever we say in the housing chapter in that regard. And then prevent or reverse further degradation of Mashpee's polluted water bodies. And then an additional goal, ensure future development does not have a detrimental impact on the flow of traffic or congestion.
Yep.
And just split them all up.
Split them all up.
So that'd be three?
I think it would be, so it ends up being one, two, three, four new goals. Just separate it out, there's no problem for me in that regard.
What about if we said, that sounds great, but what about, also what about if we said, ensure responsible development that is responsive to infrastructural capacity and resource availability, period? And then everything else is, are policies under that. In that, everything else within that goal as stated becomes.
A policy.
Becomes policies under that, support that goal.
That's a pretty good idea.
Which one? Yep.
So as I said, ensure responsible development that is responsive to infrastructural capacity and resource availability, period, and then.
Did you write that down quick?
I'm, I'm listening, there's nothing to write.
And then the, the rest become, become policies that support that.
I will work on, on that, I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, that sounds a good idea, I think, because they're more like a policy.
I just want to.
Got everything in there.
I would just say, follow LCP plan, you know?
No, uh, I'm.
I can do that, Dale. If the board doesn't have objections, I can do that.
That was good, that was good.
Oh, you said something good.
He's always thinking over there. Um, L four, LU four, instead of limit gentrification, I think we should put prevent.
What's that, Mary?
I agree.
Gentrification.
All right.
So it's like people who grew up here get priced out.
Yeah. Even people that live here are getting priced out.
It's like new subdivisions that sell houses for like one point four million dollars.
And then five is, is, is five good the way it is? I mean, it's such important, it's such an important thing, I, I tend to just want to like leave it.
I think leaving it as is falls in the spirit of like our main goal area of.
Can someone help me understand what's missing from this, though, there's a word missing, by ushering in growth that does not degrade the town's capacity to deliver or the capacity of our natural systems, deliver what?
Yeah, clean water.
Is, is that what it's saying? I'm feeling like I missed something here.
Yeah, I would say clean water.
Okay.
High quality drinking water, I kind of sense that, right?
Town's capacity for, that's capacity to deliver. For high-quality drinking water?
Are you talking about drinking water? You're talking about drinking water?
Yeah.
To, to deliver, mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, yeah, but.
Or just.
It's all, it's all, you know, now we know it's groundwater, it's drinking water, and it's open water.
Or you stop at, at the end of capacity with a period. But that's, leaves it wide open a little bit.
No, it's the capacity of our natural system, so we don't want to exceed the capacity of our natural system. It could either be capacity to deliver high-quality environmental living, or, I don't know.
I don't understand, I'm sorry, I, I wrote this, and I'm sitting here confusing myself.
Why don't you work on it?
It's the, it's the, within the allowed nutrient loading from wastewater, I don't understand its relation to the rest of the action. So can I hold?
I think, I think, I think we could do away with this whole thing because the water, the water chapter is gonna cover it.
If you guys are good with that, it's easiest to eliminate.
Good, yeah, great.
Good, thank you, Mary.
The bus liked it, so.
Less is more, huh?
Yeah, really.
Policy number five, I would just add traffic and town services. So it says, ensure that any new growth does not exceed the town's capacity to provide high-quality drinking water and/or treat wastewater. Ooh, the town's capacity, you know, something to do with traffic and the town services. So town services are right, the schools, fire, police, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I have a question, what is LU eight? What is that, is that home-based businesses?
Okay, so I, when I reevaluated the implementation sections, I made specific reference to the nineteen ninety-eight implementation plans to carry over certain policies or actions that were in that plan. This is one such action. It is only there because it's a carryover, so if the board wants to retain it, you retain it, you want to eliminate it, you can eliminate it, but that is why it is there.
I have no idea what it is.
Provide for limited neighborhood serving business where appropriate, like, I don't know.
Like a little convenience store?
Barber shop, little convenience store, daycares in like residential districts, stuff like that.
Are you talking about in the home, home-based?
Yes.
Yeah, like home-based businesses. It doesn't matter to me, I, I know, I understand it.
It's not a, this is not a deal breaker, if it stays, but it's there because it was in the nineteen. If it stays, but it's there because it was in the 1998 LCP.
What are we doing?
Delete.
Delete. I liked, um, duh, 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 duh. Yep, well, when you guys are done with policies, we can go to actions.
Good.
Okay, so we're on actions.
Oh, yeah, policy.
Number one.
Sorry, Madam Chair, can I just, I want to make a comment about, uh, LU six.
Oh, you're up there, okay.
Just a small one, um, improve and encourage connectivity between neighborhoods, commercial, municipal, residential centers.
Sure.
What would you change on that?
I'll just add in the word, just like encourage or like.
Oh, encourage as opposed to improve?
Both, right?
Move and encourage?
Yes.
Okay, good. First action?
I said yes.
Okay. Anybody agree, disagree?
Nope, I agree with that.
Okay, two?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, two?
Yep, I'm good with.
Three?
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
What would that be, like make it, make, uh, open space, uh, like not 20 acres, but 10 acres?
Reevaluate the threshold criteria notably.
That's what the problem was, it was.
Well, the 20 is only, there's only one person who, one entity that owns 20 acres.
And some of the parking requirement stuff, um, could be re- reevaluated as well.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess L four is coming, so.
Yep.
That's a yes.
That's good.
Do we want to do L five?
Yeah.
Yep.
Wavers of the flow neutral?
We want to make sure that a friendly 40B, you might want to put LIP in there, LIP? Because that's local initiative program, right? And it gets like a pre-approved before it goes to the ZBA, and even the, the, the select board get a bite at it, you know? And, um, yeah, I think if it's exactly what the town wants, then there, that we shouldn't, you know, we can figure out a way to not let our clean water plans like get in the way of that, so.
That's what I was just scared of with that neutral flow, was going to get in, in, in way of some projects. And this is a good thing to put in there, a waiver.
I'm good with L five, L six, and L seven. L eight, let's put it last on the list. I'm only kidding. I spent so much time on that. You weren't here, the rewriting of the sign code. And we, it was like, oh, it was, the meetings were awful and we've met for months and, and then didn't change one thing.
No.
I was so mad.
I think if there's anything in the bylaw that would benefit from a form-based approach, it's a, it's the sign. It's a sign code.
But you know what else I think could really benefit, and it put me, obviously this won't be for our next town meeting. But when you have a tight neighborhood that's redeveloping, like down in Pompaneset, that would really benefit from form-based code.
I would also agree with that.
Is that in here?
Uh, I don't know if I put it in there, specifically for Pompaneset.
Let's, well, let's add it for a redevelopment, a redevelopment of, I don't know, a, a co- a redevelopment of an established but older neighborhood. You know, you know, looking, looking at that as a form-based code. Remember Russell Preston?
Yep.
He did, remember he kept saying he used form-based code in Maine?
Right, yeah.
It was a cottage community. And every time they went to do something on the house, they had to go to the ZBA. And things were starting to look different and, and so they introduced an architectural design code based on form-based code. And it works, and now everybody gets to do it by right, as long as it looks good.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
There, there's only if you're going to change, you're not enforcing existing, you know?
Right, it's kind of like, you, you know, like, there are some neighborhoods that, you know, the houses are starting to look a little tired. You know what I mean? And if they're going to invest the money, then they're not going to, they're not going to replace exactly what they have.
Okay, so that, that's, uh, raise and re- replace.
Raise and replace with form-based code.
As well as modification. As well as modifications of existing.
So like some architectural codes are, are like, you know, you have to make it look, you have to accept Cape Cod architecture. And then they define that. So.
So if you had a really ugly building and you wanted to add another room to it, which was approved by the ZBA or whatever, you don't have to touch the other part to make it conform?
I don't know, that's something to think about.
It's pre-existing non-conforming, so just like any other zoning change, which the form-based code would be, it would be pre-existing non-conforming.
So it looks like a cute little cape at one end and an industrial building at the other end.
No, that wouldn't be possible under a code.
Okay. If it's ugly.
I mean, unless you codified it that way, but I would have.
I know, I'm like, they might say, if you replace 50% of your, or you're going to increase the footprint by 50%, you have to improve the entire.
I mean, that.
There is, there is a, a bylaw in Yarmouth that says that. You, you can't just, you can't just improve like the back part of the property, you have to do the whole thing.
Especially in most of like the flood plain, flood plain properties, or at least those in, uh, wetlands jurisdiction, but specifically flood plain. The, any substantial improvement to a property, which is, uh, an improvement that would cost 50% or more of the assessed value of the structure, not the land of the structure, um, you have to elevate the entire property now to new code requirements. Um, so like, um, in Pompaneset, for example, if you have an old cottage, like an original cottage from the 50s or 60s, 700 or so square feet, as an example, um, the assessed value could easily be $120,000. And then you want a new kitchen, but your new kitchen costs a hundred grand. That's a substantial improvement and you would need to elevate the entire property to new FEMA codes, which is why raise and replace is advantageous. Same would apply if you wanted to build an addition. Generally, in a flood plain, you're going to be triggering that substantial improvement and the whole property is going to have to be addressed. And that's a federal regulation.
So LU nine, you could kind of squeeze that in. You know, kind of like, you know, I don't know. Especially for neighborhoods going through massive redevelopment or something like that.
Um, you could just like add a, like a level of priority, like prioritize Pompaneset overlay district as a pilot or something like that.
Yeah, let's do that.
So what number are we on now?
That was, um, eight and nine, form-based code for signs, form-based code for the town with a priority for like something like the Pompaneset overlay district.
There were a 10.
Okay.
I'd love to figure out how to have less parking in town, but anyways, not on, not on residential, but I just see some of these commercial parking lots that are just empty all the time and hot, they're a heat island and.
Yeah.
So that's a yes?
Yeah, I like 10. 11 I've always not liked.
Well, that's a big job.
That's too much.
So we want to take that out?
Just because you write this here doesn't mean you will do it.
Won't do it.
No, it, it, I think, um, bylaws as they get amended over time can get complicated. This was done after the 1998 LCP, it was done one time. It's not critical right now. But it's something that you might want to consider in the future as amendments get made. Uh, just because you start to develop internal conflicts in the document itself, but if it were to go, it wouldn't, I think, impact this element of the LCP at all. But it's something to bear in mind.
Thank you. Thought of doing that.
We, leave it.
Like, put me over the edge. Now 12, did we already do that?
So the only thing that hasn't been, I think, amended at this point to cover the broad base of the ADU bylaw is whether, is the rental restrictions. Is, is that, is that component of it. So that's the last remaining thing, the state's evaluating these rental restrictions, that's what's left. We did make substantial changes, well, I'd say we made changes at the last town meeting that achieved some of this, but that's the one piece of.
But didn't that rental restriction go down in flames?
What you're saying.
Um, we, we brought, I brought an amendment to the board that would have, uh, resolved that conflict, that inability for you to rent both. And you said no at that time. So we didn't bring an article to town meeting that would have changed that.
I, I guess my feeling on that.
We changed the ability for the principal, the, the property owner to live in the ADU.
Right.
They can.
But they can't rent, they still can't rent both.
Rent both.
So that's really the last thing that would be left is, do you want to further evaluate the ability to rent both?
No.
I think if you rent both, you're turning this place into a rental haven here.
So wrong with a rental haven?
You got to live in one of them and rent one.
I can drag you through some neighborhoods that you would not want in Mashpee, I'm sorry.
But so that.
I think we should strike 12 for now.
And so the, and that's okay, the 12, 12 was written at a time when we hadn't made those amendments. I didn't, I opted to keep it for this presentation because.
Yes.
That, there was still that one piece of pie left on the plate, you know what I mean? But I will strike.
And 14?
Oh, wait, 13, just add ensure, the word ensure.
I feel like there's something missing in 13, and I couldn't, as I was rewriting this, I didn't know what it was. Proper citing of development, like note.
So in the old LCP, it says proper citing of development with respect to sensitive environmental zones, uh, drinking water wells. There's a section in the old, um, LCP.
I'm going to assume it's in land use and I'll find it.
Yep.
And, and expand on that particular.
Yep.
Section.
It is.
And 14, encourage the use of solid wall foundations with flood vents or pilings.
This is something you've done.
We've done it.
It's a done deal.
It's, it's not encouraged, they have to.
So in this section, I think that there's going to be continued discussions relative to, uh, new construction and expansion of development in the flood plain. That's going to be a continued discussion. DEP's valuing changes to the Wetlands Protection Act for this purpose. Um, it would probably be wise to reference, um, few potential changes in this section. We cover it also in, um, the coastal resources section as well as in the sustainability section, which we would get to. But there's, this can be stricken as written, but I, I might want to have you contemplate including something about evaluating future conditions or future development conditions in the flood plain. That go above and beyond the fill restriction.
Yes.
And maybe, maybe it's just, um.
So basically rewrite to be current, but futuristic as well. What may come about.
Yeah. I don't have an amendment to this at this time.
You want to cut it out then?
This should go as written.
Really?
As written, you, you've accomplished this action.
We've done it, so we can get rid of 14 because we've already done it. I get it.
And so future flood plain considerations, I think we tackle in coastal resources and in the sustainability section.
Get rid of that then.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So we can just get rid of 14 because we already did it. And we're not done with protecting the flood plain. Because it's, but it's in other, other chapters.
This was kind of in the old one here, number 15.
Yeah, it's in the old land use chapter that the target population is set at 15,000, which is, we are at 15,000 right now.
Correct. So this is really saying, you've established some zoning priorities. A build-out analysis should be conducted to evaluate what the population growth would be if you were to implement these changes to establish a population maximum, if it's desired in the plan.
Yeah, I, I asked that a couple of years ago. When is enough enough, like, how much can Mashpee keep on growing?
Well, drinking water, right? You gotta, how much drinking do, water do we have? How much traffic do we want? Do we have, do we have housing that serves all different populations?
I'd like to set a number, we shouldn't go over 20,000 or something, you know?
I think it's hard to not be arbitrary because you're, there, there are infrastructural and environmental limitations, but there are also needs.
Yeah.
And so if you say, all right, 20,000, but we have all these needs.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that's why I think you need to go through the exercise of evaluating what the actual build-out would look like under future conditions if you were to implement the changes.
Too bad we couldn't say from 15,000 to 20,000, it has to be affordable housing.
I know, that's what I want to say.
You know, that's what I like to say.
That's what I want to say.
You know, the rest of it has to be affordable housing.
But I have to, I have to look, I don't, I don't know if it's Orleans, I think it's, I think it's Chatham. Where does Kathy West work? She, she's the, she's the.
I don't know Kathy West.
Anyways, Kathy West is on the charter review committee, she's on the school committee. And they're doing, their, their, their town is voting on that year-round requirement. You know what I mean? So let's say, let's say we, we say, okay, yeah, you can have this residential subdivision, but a certain percentage of them, you have to guarantee are used year-round.
Yeah, something like that.
You know what I mean? Like, and that's very, isn't that new? That's like super new in zoning. And Chatham wants to approve it, and then it'll go to the AG to see if it's viable.
How do you enforce that? What's the, what's the remedy if they don't? How do you enforce that?
So what, you, it has, it has to be sold. The unit has to be sold to a year-round resident. So that's what they, they have affordable housing deed writers that say that. You have to live in it, it has to be your primary residence. You can't rent it, you have to be income eligible. So they're just, they're just taking that income eligible piece out. And they think that they can, uh, that, that it will get passed by town meeting, passed by the attorney general, and then, uh, stand up to court challenges. Just something to think about, I don't want to get people like all freaked out. If that's our problem is that, is that 30% of our housing isn't used year-round, and that's causing a problem, then maybe we should think about requiring, year-round use of new residential. You're going to have to give it an incentive, you know, like maybe a bonus density or something like that?
Yeah.
Um, but anyways. Should we put that in here? Explore year, uh, mechanisms to create year-round housing?
Should we put it in the housing element, or do you want to repeat it in both?
Probably, yeah, the housing.
It's better in the housing one.
Can you just repeat it for me, Mary?
Explore mechanisms to require year-round housing.
Can we do a such as? The one, like you decided an example, didn't you?
Oh, yeah, such as, you know, uh, you know, a new cluster subdivision that would require a certain percentage of units be used year-round, be lived in year-round.
All right, I got it.
In combination with some type of bonus density, et cetera.
Will we get a tax break?
Or a tax break, or something like that.
They already have it.
Yeah.
We already have it here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something to think about.
Heritage preservation. Goal one. Good.
I like all of it, I feel like I'm a little out of my league.
What do you say, Dale?
Let's go goal by goal.
Okay.
Okay. One, you like one?
Yep.
Yes, looks good.
Number two is good too.
Yeah.
It's good.
Number three is very good.
Sure.
Number four is good.
Yeah.
Good.
That's very good, five.
Five is good. Performing the typo there. That's good.
Performing arts. That's, that's good.
Policies, one. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for sure. Yes.
Yes, or two.
Three?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, definitely yes in that one.
Yes, four is, I really get two.
They're all good. Actions.
Any additional structures beyond?
What does that mean nominate?
Um property owners need to nominate their their structures for inclusion on the national register.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
It's a good action.
Yes. Two.
Yep.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep. Three.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, I've always wanted that adequate hotel rebuilt.
I added something to this one specifically. Um uh there's been talk about the workforce or housing project there, but uh there's also been discussion in the economic development element of about a, about incubator space to support.
But I don't like the idea of incubator space in adequate hotel.
We can just say, we don't need to provide any specificity about use.
It can be.
What's incubator space?
Start a business.
You you got an idea, you wanna create something?
It'll provide, you know, generally mentoring, capital-intensive equipment, stuff you would generally need to outlay a fair amount of cash for to start a business, but it would provide that opportunity for entrepreneurs to uh get startup cash flow to prove concept before.
Why not for a purpose to be determined?
Do, have we done the economic development section?
Yes, but um I think it needs to be reevaluated.
I think we should put the incubator there.
It is in.
It is there.
Yeah.
It is there.
But I think that it would, it, I live in this neighborhood, it would stand out like a sore thumb. I think what should be there is some, you know, when when that property gets if if the, if the hotel gets recreated, right? It'll probably be a public meeting space.
Yeah.
Right? Uh but it will probably be a public meeting space for historic commissions. Right, and tourist, right?
Good idea.
And I wouldn't even do workforce or attainable housing there, I would just keep it all historic, like a historic.
I might suggest then just saying collaborate with the tribe on the reconstruction of the hotel and its location across from Lake Avenue uh to accommodate a use to be determined by a public process.
TBD, yeah.
Now that land is land bank land, okay? So it's supposed to stay in its natural state.
You know, Tom has told me that that that, I know that that's true.
Okay, so I think you have to use like a uh Article ninety-seven process. So what you do is you repl- I think you can replace it with land bought by the community preservation committee, but you're gonna have to be really strategic and proactive because it all has to happen at the same. So for example, there's some land at the, at town meeting, there's some land coming up. I don't know if we can act quick enough to get the land bank kind of like designation of that land off of it quick enough, but it's. I talked to Ava Costello the other day and we uh is that from?
Yep.
I think, I think town council might have to put their thinking cap on that. Cause we should, we should, if it's land bank land, we should, we should morph it into that land bank restriction, if you can call it that, onto another piece of conservation land that we buy and just clear the title so we're not in violation.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You could spend a lot of money and somebody could say, oh, that's land bank land, you have to take it off, you have to, you have to restore it, and but then where would we be? Anyways.
Five, I would just say, uh like council or collaborate with the with the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe to determine a location and the rest. Just so we know it's.
My location is the rotary.
I put it in there, Dennis.
Oh, he might have something there, yeah.
I've begun those.
Been asking that for years.
I've begun those discussions.
Yeah.
Catherine was not happy with the question, but I think it's worth it.
I, I talked to Catherine, I heard it.
And so, what's the traditional name of the rotary? Isn't it twin pine? What is it?
Oh, I I mean, I was talking about the rotary and design here in Main Street.
Oh gosh.
Oh, I'm talking about.
Small roundabout, but it was pine tree circle.
Pine tree circle. And why was it called pine tree circle?
I don't know.
Okay.
It was pine trees.
It's gonna be my guess.
The poor, the poor pine trees, they're like all over the place.
Usually our descriptions are pretty straightforward, but I would say, yeah, just make sure we have the input from the tribe.
Yeah.
Absolutely, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, yes, oh, yes.
The design already.
With a special counsel from Dennis.
Yeah.
Yes, adopt a demolition delay bylaw. I don't know why there's an asterisk to it, but.
Um it's, I put an asterisk there because, so that's a carryover from the nineteen ninety-eight plan. We have a historic district without very many historical structures in it, which leads me to wonder why we would require a demolition delay bylaw. Because the only structures in the historic district with one exception um are on the national register.
Oh.
It can't be demolished. Um so the demolition delay bylaw, if applicable, would probably only pertain to a singular property in the district. Um which me, it leads me to wonder if it's, if it's worthwhile. It's the the Bell Johnson House at two seventy-eight Main Street is is not on the national register. But would probably be um eligible for inclusion on the national register.
Okay, so I would strike six, it's too much work.
You're telling me that Dunkin' Donuts is on the national register?
Dunkin' Donuts is not, no.
The historic.
But it is in the historic district.
Right, how did that ever happen?
I mean, you know, uh historic district, actually, fun fact, um the historic district exists because of the Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
Um if you read the section of the comprehensive plan, the vigor with which the historic district uh was established in two thousand and seven came about when Dunkin' Donuts proposed their project here, because it was not in existence at the time. And also, the adjacent parcels uh between Dunkin' Donuts and Lake Ave were considered for a forty B, and people panicked. Uh so the town bought those parcel parcels and then established a historic district. There's a little history.
And that's why they're land bank land, cause that was the part of money that they had at the time.
Yeah.
It's just so out of place.
So fun fact, yes.
Dunkin' Donuts was started by a guy who lived, he he lived in Mashpee, all over the country, he lived right here.
Is that true?
That's a story, I've I've heard that, yeah.
I didn't know that. I have engaged with the Dunkin' Donuts because you noted they built a little bump out for Mashpee runs on Dunkin's sign. The historic district commission denied, and I've asked them their willingness to work with the historical commission and historic district commission on district appropriate signage, that's not Dunkin' branded, but it would actually be like Mashpee focused. Um they haven't rejected the idea. We don't have a concept yet, though.
Is that, but that, is that the sign that passed the design review that they, that has historic society said no?
Uh they didn't, so they a- approved their replacement signs, but they proposed a a fair num- number of other signage that, in my opinion, and to the opinion of the commission would have been detrimental to the character of the district.
We all agreed on that, too.
When you drive down there and you make that left turn on um one thirty, you'd see that sign right there on the side of the building.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a little bump out, there's gooseneck lamps, you can see, on nothing.
Ugly looking.
It's because they weren't supposed to do their exterior modifications before they got historic approval, and they were told that in their permit, but did it anyway. And they got denied for their sign that they built a nice thing for.
Down and start again.
So I figured it's a ra- opportunity to enhance the district as much as is possible at a Dunkin' Donuts with with a sign that highlights the history of the district. But we'll see if they cooperate.
You know what's interesting is right next to them is a little bit of town-owned land.
That's the former fire station land.
And I think they maintain that landscaping.
Let me ask you, are we intending to do this whole thing tonight?
Um so I will say that I have, uh therefore I provided you, that's all of them, the exception of maybe reevaluating economic development, we didn't get into it too deeply, and I did re, I mentioned to you, I'd like to talk about it with you one more time. I'm okay with doing this in a number of ways. I am, I've completed every um edit of the implementation sections, now you've been delivered all of them. I've made substantial data updates to the elements you've already evaluated. So I'm getting to the point where I'm ready to have the consultants put this into a document together, so I can present you this in a document before submitting an article and before going to public comments and all of that. But I'm trying to work towards reasonable consensus on all these items so that I can put it together for you.
Yeah.
Um so if you wanna go through it tonight, I'm willing to sit here and do it. If you want to evaluate the other two individually and send me comments, that's fine. But I want it to be understood that I don't wanna come back to another meeting to do this again. I'd prefer to take your written comments, edit them, put it together, and then bring it back for you to evaluate in its totality.
I think um sustainability and open space is a little too heavy for nine twenty at night.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should finish up historic.
Let's do the historic.
And I'm good with that, I'm I'm good with how things set.
Another meeting during the week or something, though?
Anytime you want.
I have a nine o'clock on Friday.
Yes.
Um I can't do anything until.
My Friday's pretty busy too, that'll be a a quick one. Um but I'm happy to meet anytime um on the other two sections, or take comments in writing, whatever is your preference. But my goal, uh just to kind of further expand this, you probably read the newspaper article, I I I didn't want them to be too presumptuous before I talk to you about what I'd like to see happen in terms of a timeframe. Uh cause we're getting up, you know, I'm already thinking about October, it comes so fast.
Right.
And and we still gotta bring it to the Cape Cod Commission.
So he, here's what I would let, in a perfect world, this is what I would like to have happen. Now, we very seldom have a perfect world, but I'm gonna do my best. I feel very comfortable that the implementation sections, um with the remaining two sections I need to receive comment on and all of the chapters are in enough form to put together so that I can present the first proper draft to you. That includes vision, uh community engagement, elements, implementation, and appendices. I would like to give that to you as soon as we finalize these details. Ideally, we have that compiled and a preliminary review of the final document by the end of June.
Yep.
No, good.
Um and with a comfort level, a warrant article submitted by July to at least reserve a place on the warrant for adoption.
Mm-hmm.
That would allow us July and August to send to the Cape Cod Commission and hold public comment period. It would then require you to take August, month of August more or less, um and maybe into September to evaluate any comments received and decide how you're gonna address those comments. Um and then we would incorporate those into the document. That would leave September to October to have the document final to be consumed by the public before town meeting. So we're tight on this timeline, I wanna be clear. Worst-case scenario is it goes until May. But if it goes to May, I don't necessarily wanna have to reevaluate this entire document again and make data updates.
Yeah, no.
So that's what I'm thinking.
It's doable.
In other words, you say if you miss the October deadline, you don't write anything further, you just just rolls it over to May.
Yes.
I have a question. When we sent it to the Cape Cod Commission, I can't remember. If they send it back to us and say we have to do changes, like you have to change this.
They would identify.
Do we have to send it back to them again to show them the changes, or?
Probably would.
The final final has to be certified by the, by them.
Yeah.
So if we don't put the changes in, they're gonna notice.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I agree, but.
But we should get, we should get their comments before we take it at town, before we take it to town meeting.
It could postpone it, you know, we have to send it back, but.
Well, we tell them we wanna go before town meeting, you know, do their job and get the responses to us.
Yeah.
So that's my perfect world scenario, if we can try to work towards that goal.
Sounds good to me. Now let's finish up this.
I've looked at all of these, I'm a yes on everything.
On historic?
Yeah. I I was wondering about twelve. Uh Dale, what, what monuments would would you suggest, or what particular monument would you suggest for that area?
We would have to just, I think that again would have to be.
Yeah, I know, it would have to be voted on, but who, give them our names.
Can I tell you what I propose to the historical commission?
Say it again?
Uh can I tell you what I propose to the historical commission?
Yeah, who?
So um the historic district commission was established in two thousand and seven. Um it was chaired up until his departure from the commission by Earl Mills Senior.
Yeah.
Um he has uh left town, he's no longer on the commission. The historic district commission would like to honor Earl with a monument. I think a modern uh Wampanoag dignitary would be a very interesting person for a monument such as Earl. Now, I mentioned this also to Catherine, who said, well, we should probably have a policy about naming this stuff, which I also put in the plan. Um so that's was my idea, but we, I think the historical commission's actually gonna discuss it on Thursday. Um but that's who I would propose.
I I would, I I I would involve the tribe.
Of course.
Do you know what I mean? Like there's, there's um, there there's this culture of of humility and um.
He might not wanna be on a statue, but.
First, right.
I'm hardly the decision maker, but.
I mean, he's somebody from this part of town, you know what I mean? There's, there's, there's um some people that we, we we don't interact with that are like internationally known in MacArthur fellows, you know what I mean? So we get it, we just gonna be, uh, me, I would rather have a symbol than a person, not that I don't like Earl. Um I think it just, it takes away the focus. Um I, that's, that's me.
So I would say I just.
Who would be? And this part of, not a per, and this part of town is starting to be like lots of monuments and stuff like that, it's like.
But all veterans monuments, there's no like, nothing else.
Well, it it, yeah, people say that this park over here is wasted space, and they wanna put more monuments and statues, and it's like, it's like, almost like we need a museum. You know what I mean? Rather than, like, we have green space that, well, anyways.
Who would be the greatest historical Wampanoag that you could think of?
Earl.
No, not living, but somebody, you know.
My great-grandfather Oakley. Yeah, I I don't know, it, I I'd really have to, there are so many.
I mean, there's, you know.
It would be very hard to pick one.
Jesse Littleville brought back the language.
I agree, Mary, it should, it should be a symbol more than an individual.
So why don't we just focus in this plan, the establishing a policy, coordinating with the tribe, identifying locations, and leave it at that?
Yes, thank you.
We're not gonna nominate people through this plan.
Thank you. I don't wanna, cause it's not going well.
We'd like to put you up, but you have to pass the way forward.
Cause I was on the.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, to be on a monument, I think I'll just kill myself.
All right, are we done with that piece? Can we go on? I'm like really tired. Sorry.
I'm tired.
I'm exhausted.
Thirteen's good, fourteen's good, and fifteen looks good.
People wanna watch the Celtic, right?
Yeah, if it's still on.
Okay, thirteen and fourteen are good.
And fifteen looks good to me as well. That looks really good.
Well, that, that is kind of saying there that it's going to happen. I mean, we don't know if it'll happen.
No, it's mutually advantageous. If it's not mutually advantageous, you don't do.
Yeah.
You don't do, I like that, is that technical term?
That's gonna pass.
Ever so, or are the same as restore, so.
Okay, so that's it for that. So let's see, this next section, which we're not gonna do tonight. Uh how long would that take to do? Sustainability.
I'm totally okay with the board evaluating these and providing your comments in writing, but I would just ask that you actually do it if that's what we end up deciding to do. Don't leave and bail on it, because if you do.
We will, it, um, I'd I'd like it, well, anyways, um, but I'd like to come back and and see the red line.
That's fine, we have time for that. Cause it's, that really is just those two final sections that you haven't touched yet, at least not since they were initially drafted.
Yeah.
So do you want, like on open space, maybe we we take, you know, the odd week and look at it and write comments?
On our next meeting, why don't we just leave those two on the agenda? In the meantime, why don't you take the week to review and provide comments to me, so I can incorporate any comments you receive before your next meeting?
Okay.
That would be great.
Yes, that was good.
Okay. The board, the board engineer, is he still, this poor man, he's still here.
I'm still here. I, I, I move you alter the agenda along with a leave earlier.
We gotta remember that Ed's here.
Okay, you know, you have to just remind us every time and make a note and put it in front of the chair.
Yeah, we should put that before old business from now on.
Okay, do you have anything?
Well, I was gonna say that there is no, uh I did make notes certainly of uh uh Aquay Highlands butter, Mr. Dorsey, and his comments, so I'm gonna speak to, I'll speak to Evan tomorrow offline just to go over that. I'll speak to Catherine Laurent as well and find out what, he sounds like he he mentioned something about signage, which I'm unaware of. So I will, I.
About what?
Sign, signage, a number of signs.
The only concern that I'm aware of at this point that needs to be addressed is some erosion that occurred in that one detention basin that you've been aware of, because Catherine had showed you, and we were going to work with Jacques to address that particular problem. But regarding signage, Jacques did deliver the speed radar sign, it's in possession of the DPW.
Was there other signs?
There is a stop sign contemplated. There is a stop sign contemplated in the permit, but the permit condition asks the neighborhood if they desire the stop sign to petition the select board for its construction, which they have been made aware of and they have not done. So the obligation is not Jacques's.
Alright.
Yeah, because there were, there was not consensus about the stop sign.
You would have to pay for it if they do that.
Right.
But they haven't done that.
Yeah.
Um, and so, the, uh, ongoing, um, material stockpile and dirt pile has been substantially mitigated. I will say it's not gone.
It's, it's way down.
Substantially mitigated and it's up to the commissioner, which I had, he did go out today to reevaluate.
So do they store the soil there and then use it to back?
But he did when he excavated, he, he, he piled all the loom and just left it there and he wanted to screen it and sell it as opposed to trucking it offsite.
Oh.
So the concern is he's got like an earthworks operation there. And so, and the commissioner's like, you're right, you need to move this, which he did, he did do. Uh, it is just not gone. And so, we're doing the best on it.
The other thing that I'm working on is a review of the Osprey Court, the Great Oak Road, the Osprey Court subdivision, Great Oak Road subdivision, um, by Willow Bend, so I will have that report next week. Um, for the fifteenth, it's being reviewed by the board on the fifteenth. Um, and I guess the only other thing finally that I'd like to just mention, um, to maybe help, since I had some time on my hands to look something up, um, to talk about it briefly, is, uh, regarding a motion, so, uh, making motions, so. It just so happens following Rob, Robert's rules of order, that the chairman can make motions, vote like any other member, make deliberations and vote like any other member. However, it is recommended to, uh, provide the, um, you know, position of impartiality to procure a motion from other members of the, of the board.
And make the.
So, it's allowable, but preferred to show, you know, impartiality on behalf of the, the, the board. Um, and then deliberate with the other members of the board and make a vote. So, just to clarify, and I might say that in your two thousand and five revised, um, planning board, public board, public meeting, hearing and procedures, uh, it mentions under motions on chapter four, the chair may entertain motions by other board members sitting on the application. After a second, the chair should open the floor for discussion by the board members and if requested, staff. After discussion, the chair should call for a vote. So it's silent on whether the, the chair could make the motion, but it is certainly possible. But I, I say that it's generally accepted practice for the chair to request member of the board to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's how, Ed, we've done it here. I've been on this board since two thousand and eight and that's kind of like the board culture, but thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, so, I guess you can, uh, you, you're done now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good night, Ed.
For your help too. Um, okay, the, I, the report I have.
By the way, the, the audio on my end is stunning. It's perfect. I can hear everything very clearly.
It's beautiful. It's really beautiful.
You hear the testimony for everyone. It was really, uh, really a tremendous improvement.
You know, following up with, on Chair Person's report, following up with what I talked about last time PFAS, you know, now the new law, federal law is gonna be four parts per trillion of PFAS and we have five years to do it. There's a, a film, and I think you should mark your calendar on this one, cause I'm going to it. It's a PFAS reckoning on Sunday, May nineteenth at, I guess that's, oh, that's a Sunday, eleven thirty AM at the Wampanoag Community Center. The tribe will be partnering with Steep, which I don't know what that is, to screen the Bloomberg investigates documentary called The Poison in Us All. A post-film panel discussion will share the results of recent fish and shellfish PFAS testing. Cause I, I have a friend who's a mo- a retired marine scientist from Woods Hole. He's not eating anything that's coming out of any of our waters. Which is very upsetting.
Gotta eat something, so, you know? It's like, it's, it's, it is, it's very upsetting. It's like, you know, well, anyways, I'm gonna put it on my calendar. I'll see you then, nineteen, May nineteen.
Yeah. And, um, town planner report?
Uh, harbor management planning committee met on Tuesday. We're beginning to edit the first draft of the harbor management plan. Uh, we evaluated and made recommendation, recommended changes on the natural resources and the water quality sections of that plan. Um, I would say the plan is largely consistent with the LCP and hazard mitigation plan. In fact, I borrowed some copy for some of the final chapter edits so that we were sure to be consistent. We have a number of chapters or elements recommended or sections left to evaluate. Um, I'd anticipate the committee would be, be able to complete its evaluation of that over the next couple of months, but may not be complete through the, until the end of the summer. Housing production plan is same update. Alexis is finalizing the, um, the draft to be submitted to you and the select board. I've written to the town manager's office, uh, to have them inquire as to our joint meeting and I'm awaiting a reply. Um, it'll be post-election, so there's likely to be a new chair of the select board. Um, so I've asked that they coordinate with the uh, with the, I've asked the town manager's office to assist me in coordinating a meeting to finalize that. Um, it'll likely be, what I'm proposing for them is the first meeting in June. Um, the chair of the affordable housing committee is out of town through the end of May, so I wanted to ensure that he was available for your final review. So we'll make those final changes. We'll get you the draft and we'll hopefully have a joint meeting in early June to final, finalize that.
Awesome.
Okay. Cape Cod, uh, the board.
Cape Cod Commission. Alright, so, um, the Cape Cod Commission received, not a lot, but they received public comment on their regional housing strategy. And I don't know if they emailed you about anything.
They did, actually.
And they're, they're making changes, um, and they're, they're sending, you know, town specific ones to the town planner, so that should be out soon. The Cape Cod Commission is finalizing its regional housing strategy. Um, charter review committee.
Yeah.
Meets tomorrow, I think at six thirty, and they had a survey and I think they beat us, Evan, with the number of responses. Now granted,
Ours took thirty minutes.
Ah, yeah, this, you know, right, this is a really short survey, but anyways, they, we're gonna have preliminary results available tomorrow.
Oh, nice.
Um, uh, we're not televised, so you have to come. Um, CPC, um, there's several items to be voted on at town meeting and town meeting is May sixth.
No design review, plan review?
Did not meet.
Environmental oversight committee?
EOC met, however, due to the, uh, last minute nature of the, uh, agenda being posted, I was unable to find a babysitter, so I couldn't attend, so I don't have an update.
Dennis is late cause he's babysitting. You got children, man. You gotta stop blaming the kids, guys.
Historic com- district commission?